Okay. All right. So I'd like to call the May meeting of the Champlain Valley School District to order. And I have two adjustments to the agenda. One is 6.1.2 is being removed from the agenda. And we're going to add 6.4, which is to appoint a new vice chair. Are there any other additions to the agenda? No? Okay, hearing none. I see one member of the audience, are you here to speak?
Yes. You need to ask. No, you're so much lovelier in person than on television. And seriously, just want to thank everybody from bottom of my heart. I'm so excited about the new opportunity. Can't wait till I start.
Yeah. I reflect that. I feel that the same way. I'm excited for both you and for Mark to join the CSSU-CVSD staff, so that's awesome. So I'll take that as a no, you're not here to speak to the board. And we'll move on to 4.0, which is reports to the board. And take it away, Russ. Do you have anything to fill us in on?
Cookie.
Yeah. So we're scheduled to meet with them May 11?
A week from tonight.
A week from tonight, May 9.
That is the night, I guess. At our last meeting, we made an offer on health care, notwithstanding whatever might happen at the state level. That was, the board would cover 85 percent of both the premium as well as the contribution to an HRA. And the association members would cover 15 percent. And it was basically positioned as last best, take it or leave it. So we're hoping that they come back with, you know, an offer or, you know, accepting that, and then we can move on to new money. If they don't accept that, then I'm not sure things are going to go any further. So that's basically where we are.
All right. Any questions?
Just if you have any more color than what's sort of been in the news about the legislative, you know, solutions being proposed.
Do I have any more color on it? No.
And does our board have any opinion?
So I think I heard what you asked about, do we have any more information about that? Or any response from? I wrote a note to the representatives yesterday and heard back from three of them. Mike Gantachka sent back a pretty detailed note that said, late in the legislative cycle to be presenting this, not enough time to do the work around what is the impact on different things, where will the money really come from, how will they get the money that's saved from the schools into the state coffers, that kind of thing. So it sounds like they're kind of moving towards establishing a study committee and having it be a real agenda item for the next year. Mark, you also heard basically the same thing?
I blocked that email back. I'd reached out to Mike Gantachka, and he basically sent me exactly what he sent to Elaine.
And these are reps, not senators?
Reps.
Okay.
Because it's already gone through the Senate.
Right.
So we just focused on them.
Well, that's where the Senate landed too, I think, was what they studied.
Too late to really do the work.
Governor Scott seems to have a habit of that, as far as, you know, I mean, some of these proposals seem to make sense, but they seem to become in daylight and a dollar short.
That's the unfortunate thing, because I think with the state's mindset of consolidation and all that working, it's not a one size fits all. But it is unfortunate, because it's, to me, it mirrors some of that mentality of doing things collectively, less expensively.
Right.
So I was sorry to see it come at the end.
Yep.
Even a good idea, at the end, it's going to come out with unintended consequences. And that's what I think they're being careful about.
We've had experience with those unintended consequences fairly recently.
But that's what the next session is for.
Right. And this is the same biennium, so they could move much faster.
Yeah. I mean, it would seem to me that if you save each district money on health care, where that money goes is less, less cost comes out of the education fund. Doesn't seem like really difficult math, does it?
No. Not that piece of it, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just a different tax rate, right?
Yeah. So...
But that's not the way it's viewed. I mean, even by our teachers, right? I mean, that's what we were coming up against. They believe that there's a pot of money, and that when that savings is realized, they benefit as well, even if all things are equal, which is, it's an educational process.
Yep. All right. Do we need an executive session at the end?
I don't.
No? Okay. I kind of feel the same way. Does anybody feel strongly that we should have an executive session? Have confidential questions they want to ask? Okay. All right.
Could I make a couple announcements before you go on to Action Matters?
Sure.
So there's a mentor colloquium right here at CVU, May 10, which is next Wednesday, from 3:30 to 5:30. You're all invited. This is where the mentor teachers and the mentees come, share their work. It's impressive. It's really, I've been pretty much every year, and it's pretty impressive to see the work that they do. So you're all invited to that.
Elaine, I just want to echo that if people have time to do it, I've done it, I think, a couple of times. And it really, it's very informative about our processes for mentoring new teachers in the school, and it's very inspiring also, that our work.
Thank you.
May 10, 3:30 to 5:30.
May 10, 3:30 to 5:30, in the dining room. And secondly, the PTO in Shelburne is hosting a reception for the new Shelburne Community School Principal, May 18, which is a Thursday, from 6 to 7. And now, this person is all of your employees, so if you're interested in attending that.
All right. That's great. We have no presentations, so we'll move on to Action Matters. Do we need to break these out and discuss them individually? Or can we approve them and block? I saw, I saw our new process at place where we have a letter from each person requesting a leave of absence, and you provided all of your backup materials, so I assume everything is approved by staff. So, could I get a motion to approve?
I'd make a motion to approve all of the nominations and the leave of absence request.
Okay. A second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. So we move to 6.2, date and time of meetings for '18. So, this came up, one of the schools contacted me, when are you guys having your meetings? Because we're trying to schedule music concerts, and when do you have your? So, got me thinking, and right now, this organization meets first Tuesday. And Elaine pointed out that sometimes, or all the time, very often, it falls, if we have a week-long vacation, it falls right after that, which makes it difficult to prepare. So, I'd like to go back to third Tuesday, as we've done for CSSU and our local boards for a long time, starting in the fall. There has been conversation to have a short business meeting.
What did you say?
I just think...
Bob? Well, I think what I brought up is I'd like the board to consider at some point in time whether they would more effectively run with a business meeting scheduled two weeks out of sequence with the third weekend. But I think what we'd like to do is have that conversation at the retreat.
Okay.
There's, thinking about all the work you individually do, and then piling it all into one board, there's probably a need for you to meet more often to get some business items taken care of than just a month to months.
And I thought there was something that also came along that said, do some business work, and then all be here to break out into committees and be in one place.
Exactly. And that's why it would be a good retreat topic, so that we could explain what we're thinking and how that would work, and have the discussion.
So, fast forward to something to think about, but could I get a motion to move our major meetings to the third Tuesday, starting in September 17?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
What time?
Six.
Between September and December, is CSSU and the individual boards still meeting to finish after the audits?
No. So it'll be just this board, and it will be, you know, 90 percent budget, just as that always has been.
Okay. Thanks.
I think there will be like a one-off meeting amongst each individual local board to approve the audit, correct?
As work gets presented and needs to be taken care of, you will all figure out a way to get into section and do it.
Okay. So third Tuesday is at six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 6.3, adopt. Can I get a motion to adopt the Vermont Municipal Employee Retirement Acceptance and Determination Agreement? Hang on a second.
Second.
Second. Okay. Discussion, so, there is a second page on this that I was just trying to decipher with It just piqued my interest because it sounded somewhat important, and it had my name on the bottom of it. It's a sign that was sent out to a bunch of people, so I just was digging in, and if anybody on staff could help me with, the general calculation is, for pension, is 1.4 percent times credited years of service times your average yearly salary for three to five years. Does that sound right, Bob?
Yes, I don't have a sheet of paper in front of me, but that sounds...
Yeah, it's right there. It's right there, right in your right hand. Turn it over. There it is.
Okay. Now that I know what you're referencing.
So my only question was, what is credited service? It's not defined on that piece of paper. And I think there's an error in column...
It relates their year, I think.
Yeah, it's the year's service in a job that qualifies as credible.
Okay.
Creditable.
Okay.
So they have to be within an employee category that is covered by the municipally employees' retirement system to have credited services.
So I assume in column A, group A, third row down, where it says 1.4 percent times credited service, it doesn't have the average, so the column to the left of you...
Yep.
It's missing one number, which is the average salary for the last five years. Is that correct?
I dug out the chicken.
Whereas, column B and column C both have those.
Yes, this is based just on a, oh, it doesn't have this little thing right there? Yeah, it should have AFC on it, average file compensation. I would believe so. I don't know how you take that number times that number and finish without getting, but these are, you know that these are three benefit levels that under municipal employees, the employee has the discretion to select.
Right.
And those are all still available to them in the...
And this is just assigning who's going to go into which group, and some people are grandfathered in, some people are grandfathered out. That's what the statement says on the previous page, but...
Correct.
Okay. So that was all from my education, so is there any further dis...
Has it always been 60, I was looking at A and B anyway, has it always been 60 percent of their AFC, or is that... I don't, I don't believe, I know of nothing that says that's changed as part of this process. What they're trying to do is move large numbers of employee to register under the system with a new employer, the federal tax ID for the new board. And it is a moment when they can elect to change coverage. So hence, they get to reassess where they want to be landing on the table, revisit that, and make a decision as we move from seven entities to one. But the primary task is to getting everybody loaded to the new, to the new system under their new employer.
Okay.
Okay.
You tweeted about this this week?
I was tweeted.
Oh, you were tweeted about it? I was like, wow, your second day, and you're already, you're already bringing a new level.
I tweeted this.
Sorry. All right, any further discussion on VMS? All those in favor of adopting this determination agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. So, 6.4, we need to appoint a new vice chair, and I'm not sure, I didn't clear this, like, so how do I go about, do I make a motion to...
No, you ask if anybody's interested.
Ah, okay. All right.
And then you ask them to make, somebody to make a motion.
Okay. So is anybody interested in being vice chair?
I would be interested.
Oh, Colleen, that's wonderful.
I'd be delighted to be your vice chair.
So could I get a nomination for Colleen? Okay.
Second.
And second. Okay. Do we discuss this, or do we ask for any other nominations?
The nominations.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of Colleen as vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, team.
Thank you. We move on to discussion matters. 7.1, policies G and H. Again, most of these are changing. CSSU to CVSD, there were three items in Cindy's packet. Two have things that we should discuss. Number one was the animals on school property.
I'm so happy to see that one again.
Oh, yeah? Well, it's interesting.
We discussed it for about three years, the last time.
Oh, yeah. So I see the two, I see the two...
We were going to have it early.
Oh, I know, I know, I was ripping through this. So, there are two different policies, and basically, Heinsburg, Shelburne, and CVU have one that says, has two extra sentences where animals may only be walked in designated areas, and no animals can come to athletic events. It's my impression that perhaps the first one is to keep dogs from peeing on the playground. Sorry, dogs, I just accused you of that. And the, you know, I don't know the origination of the second, aside from the dog running through the soccer game. But, living in Shelburne, I've never seen that rule enforced nor followed. Does anybody feel strongly about any of these policies?
I guess they...
Either of these two?
I think I am a dog lover. I'm also cautious of dogs. I have seen small children freak because of dogs coming at them, because we're watching the game, and I've got my dog on a leash, and a kid comes. I think it's a safety thing. I think it's great fun to have the dogs there and everything, but not everybody loves them.
Right.
And we start clapping and screaming, and the dog starts barking, and I just think if we have a blanket, no, they can stay in the car with the windows open. Our sports seasons are cool enough usually. I've just seen little kids get scared, and adults too. That's my take.
Are we discussing all five locations, or just those three?
No, we're discussing going to a unified policy. And so, to apply across all towns and all school buildings, we need...
It's a little complicated in Williston, because the town leases some of the fields, and so, they, I don't even know what parts of the field we control from, I honestly just don't know. So I don't know how that would play out.
So that's something we would clarify then.
I think Shelburne has a similar situation with some of the fields that surround the school, but, you know, we can at least make a decision for what is school property, and then sort out whatever issues there may be with any sort of lease property.
And school events.
Or school events, right.
That's going.
So, when this came up before, I mean, these two issues were identified, you know, it being a safety issue, owners not cleaning up after their dog. And then there's also the issue of enforcement. So who's the person that's going to go and say, please take your dog away?
Board members from that community.
Yeah.
The vice chairperson.
You know...
Ooh, good one.
Slash animal control officer.
Could you repeat that? I don't think Sandy got that into the minutes. On tape, too, I think.
So, while, it is, it's a complicated issue. It's not an easy issue. The arguments for it are, these are public spaces, supported by public dollars. People see the green spaces as their public parks, and should therefore be able to have their dogs around. It is really difficult when there's a sign, and then dogs come through, and it's like, okay, who's going to tell those people to take their dog away? Cleaning up after dogs go through, you know, I just wonder if there's an education piece, or we put signs, or, to me, it's the enforcement piece that's really challenging.
Is there an aspect of this, and Mark, maybe you can help me? If you put a warning out there, and maybe you don't put out specific school monitors to enforce it, but if it becomes a problem, you then have a way to say, well, hey, listen, this has been a problem with your animal, you've had a problem with this person and your animal, this sign is here, we're going to have to ask you to follow this rule.
Well, if you're talking about selectively enforcing it, I think that would be a problem. If you're talking about, oh, you're having a problem with your animal, but this person over here has a great animal, he can bring him whatever he wants, that can be a problem, right? Look, if you're going to decide not to allow animals at athletic events, let's start with that one, then you'd have to at least post a sign, and then, and then, and then there's a decision of how strictly you enforce it.
Yeah.
And, right, and then you have to decide who enforces it, because that's a whole separate, all a wax. And that's, and that's not getting to the point of Williston, where there, and Heinsburg and Charlotte, too, where there's green space around the school where dogs are going through to get to public spaces.
And it could, it could be that, you know, in the case of Shelburne, we assume that to be school property, but in all honesty, it's not.
Yeah.
You know, everything outside of the walking track is not school property, but a school soccer game is happening upon it.
Oh, right, outside the, but on the field itself, which is right.
The field is on the town.
So, well, and, but that gets to a separate, that's part of the policy, though. It's an athletic school event that, so you may not control the actual ground, but the athletic school event has a policy around it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, is there any, sort of, I mean, it sounds like there's a consensus that there should be a no-dog policy? I mean...
Well, that's the other thing. There doesn't need to be, I mean, this is not strict policy that needs to be there at all.
Has there been a safety problem anywhere along the line? It feels like in a lot of communities, we live in Vermont, it's outdoors, a lot of people have dogs, a lot of people bring them to events, there doesn't seem to be a problem? I mean, do we need to create a solution to a problem that doesn't really exist, or?
I would be interested in what's been, since we have these different policies, I'd be interested, what's the history over the past few years?
Well, so I'd ask the question, and there's lots of parents on the board, how many of you have been to a game where there wasn't a dog? You know?
Yeah.
I've broken the rules and brought my own dog.
I didn't know there was a rule.
You know, I mean, it's, do you put in, I mean, do you put in language just to make sure that dogs are on leashes, and so that, you know, perhaps addresses safety aspect with kids that don't want to be scared by a dog? And then, really, I think the second statement about where they can go is, is it really getting to the fact that you've just, you'd like to keep the dogs away from playgrounds, perhaps? I mean, kind of a no-brainer, but...
Yeah, I, personally, my feeling is educate the public and not take this on as our challenge, but, I mean, that's my personal feeling. The last time we did go through this policy discussion, it really was two or three years before we came up with something.
A few years ago, there was a whole issue about dogs and other pets in schools.
Right.
Right. So I think it would be good for us to dig that up. Okay, what was that? Because there were, at the time, directives from the state around health issues and other things, so rabies.
Probably should turn about rabies.
Right, so we should just look, and people, kids who are allergic and all that kind of stuff, so maybe we'd want to dig that up.
And both policies have that covered quite well.
Probably because back then, it was a major issue.
Are there any liability issues?
That's what I was just going to ask.
You know, if we allow dogs at sporting events and they eat somebody, what is the potential liability? School district.
Or if you have a sign, and someone violates it because you haven't enforced it, is that a bigger problem? I don't, you know...
My guess would be our insurance carrier has got our back. I mean, you know, I mean, it's a pretty low probability event, but I'm sure we're covered for that sort of thing.
Should I know?
Of course, there's liability concerns with human beings being at the sporting events, but...
Oh. Solution.
Watch it on TV.
Exactly. No spectators.
No social interaction.
If you, who just was talking about dog, you know, having a policy where dogs need to be on leashes, and, and that is, you know, that's a sane compromise that we expect a dog owner, I would expect a dog owner who brings a dog to a soccer game to have the dog under control and that sort of thing.
My layperson understanding is, if you have a policy and you don't enforce it, and somebody gets hurt, then you're liable. But if you don't have a policy, and somebody gets hurt, then you're not liable.
Yeah, is that close?
Is that right?
Okay. It's the same, I think you're in the same situation.
You're liable no matter what, because otherwise, Mark's friends wouldn't be employed.
Anybody consuming anything.
I think something that happened in Williston recently, there was a counter-for harm activity for Williston Central School, because there are a lot of dogs, and there's a need for dogs to be on leashes. The town has taken that on, and they put up signs, and they are enforcing it, and they were actually giving out some fines. So I don't know if that's something that we could push to town, but I think that's what Williston Central School has done. And then the town also built a bypass around the playground at Allen Brooks, such that people who are walking, pets and stuff, don't come near the school as much anymore. So, I mean, maybe this is something that we ask the town to handle, and then we just say, follow the town's guidelines? I don't know.
Well, and there is one that says, something about local ordinances, animal owners must be in compliance with local town ordinances, so assuming the town has a leash law.
Yeah, Williston, yeah.
Okay.
Fall back on that.
Right.
That's in version two, or option two of the...
I don't know which version we're going with, but there is a typo. On page 24G9, we need to remove CSSU. So if we go with that one, we've got to kill CSSU. Page 24, oh, G9.
So the one that has, I don't have it in front of me, the local ordinance, must follow local ordinances, is that, is that the one that has?
That's option two, that also speaks directly to athletic events, and says they're not allowed at athletic events.
Yeah.
I think it's going to be very, very tough to control.
Oh, it's impossible.
Yeah. And, you know, I've been at athletic events where it's hard enough to control the parents, let alone...
It gets back to no spectators. Well, my guess is town ordinances are different, because Charlotte doesn't actually have a leash law.
Yeah, I was going to ask that, yeah.
Yeah, so that piece in and of itself tells you that there's going to be inconsistencies with the town.
So, I mean, I'm kind of inclined, the things I've heard here, which are, if you can't enforce it, shouldn't have it. I do like...
The part that seems less enforceable, I mean, you can, you can enforce it if you really wanted to, but the part that seems less enforceable is athletic events or things that are happening out on school grounds where it's already happening today.
Yeah.
Allowing somebody to bring their animal into the building is a different discussion.
Yeah, and that's covered in all, that's covered in later parts of the, of the policy. But I think if the policy has dog, you know, obviously Charlotte's going to be a special case.
I don't think so. I think if it says must follow town ordinances, our policy is consistent, it says that town ordinances are different.
Right, that's what, that's what, I mean, that's make me saying, I wish everybody had a leash law, but I can't do that, so, but I think that's a good compromise. I would like, I don't know, maybe education is a way to address the second sentence, and just put up signs around the school that say, you know, this is a playground, please don't have your dog on this playground, and common sense, that type of thing, and go with the policy that doesn't have the first two sentences about athletic... about athletic events and designated areas. So...
We use the Williston playground quite a bit and I, I don't think I've ever seen a dog actually on the playground. They're always tied up outside of it. So I think that for the most part, you know, I think the majority of the population are using these spaces, are being respectful and courteous.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, you know, the few people that, you know, where the town or dog catcher or police might have to deal with.
Yeah. Yep. So, well, can you craft some changes to the second policy and put that forth for us next week, next month?
So if I've got this, the first two sen, the sentence about the athletic events is out.
Yep.
Keep in compliance with local town ordinances.
Is in.
Yep.
And then everything about animals in school and discretion of the principal.
That's in both, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. All right.
Will we, will we review the policy again before adopting it?
We can.
Or is the plan to adopt it?
We can review it.
We can review again.
Maybe, you know, just to give people a chance to voice, you know, a lot of people, their animals are their, it's their family. And...
So I think we've...
Part of it is honoring. Certainly be in for discussion again next...
Yeah, it doesn't hurt to say that.
Yeah, no problem. It is May, so our next meeting is the business meeting in June, right?
Yeah, that's just a quick meeting. But there's nothing to say. I mean, this can be, you didn't have this in September.
Okay. All right. The other thing that was on policies was homework and...
No homework.
CVU, homework during vacation. CVU has a policy of no homework over vacation. It would be nice if we could make that a CVSD policy where for vacation, I think it says for holidays of longer than three consecutive weekdays, which covers Thanksgiving as it used to be, but now Thanksgiving is five days. So is everybody okay with making that a CVSD wide policy for?
I think we ought to leave it up to the teachers. I don't think that's a good idea. I think you need to have consistency. I, I don't, I don't see that as a teacher level.
Well, there are, there is language within the policy, hold on, hold on. There is language within the policy where if it's needed on a case by case basis, based on catching up or something else that a schedule conflicts, it can be done. It's not saying absolutely none. There's three, there's three safety valves in the policy.
I think the spirit of the policy was not to have a big project due, right? Like that kind of a...
I think the guff that the administration will hear if there's a certain teacher who insists on doing it and most of the rest of them don't, it'd just be a nightmare.
Yeah, hold on one second, Tom. Have you had a question, Colleen?
No, I...
Okay.
There are definitely some loopholes to the policy. I'm a pretty big fan of it and I think most teachers honor it too. There've definitely been a few teachers that have been like, well, I'm not going to assign you something due the day after break. It'll be due the second class after break. But, I mean, in none of these cases has it been like a big project. It's been more just like a small thing. Or I've had a teacher that's been like, oh, I'll give you a practice quiz that doesn't count to your grade the day you get back. Even in my AP classes, teachers have generally honored the homework, no homework over break policy. And in K through eight, my experience has been that teachers generally didn't really assign homework over break regardless. So there's not too much at stake by extending it down.
I'd be interested in Erin's perspective also.
I was stunned that it said, like, I had to tell my students tomorrow that they have, we had a district level policy about, at the high school, no homework over break. I have to do purchase to research now. Probably be a movement there, but... I, I understand and it makes common sense. I think the only, my only concern would be reading that, you know, for mo, at most grade levels, and this is my own, like, first grader too, the expectation or goal is to have kids reading 20, 30, whatever date, you know, minutes a day. And that's not a hard and fast, like, homework rule that's being checked, but it's sort of, I mean, now that, and especially now that they've gone to no homework in Williston, the big caveat is, but says read every night. So I just wouldn't want to send the wrong message about. I think for most parents, it's obvious, of course, you're still going to read and most parents would do that and you do that anyway, but...
It would be also, I mean, like, it's also, it's also, it's also a great time for the consolidation of learning where you get a break and you're like, wow, I need to recharge and, and get back at it. But could we put something like you're saying in the pre, in the preamble of the policy? Be like, while we encourage daily reading, especially in the younger grades or something like that?
We do ask them to read over the summer vacation.
Yeah. Brendan?
I see, kind of see both sides of this. And the side, one side that I'm seeing is that our teachers are working underneath guidelines where they have to have things accomplished within certain timeframes within a school year. And I feel that most of the teachers may or may not want to assign homework, but if they need to, for whatever reason, if they're behind or something, they, they should just be able to do it freely. Having a policy that says you shouldn't do this is going to have them finding some type of loophole to either leave off the section or cram more in at a different time. So I think that maybe a guideline to say, hey, we, we prefer not to do this, but a policy to say that we're not going to assign homework over scheduled vacation seems...
Well, I think, I mean, they're, if they fall behind because of snow days, which is explicitly called out in the policy, that's a little safety valve as well.
But what, what happened if they fall behind because, you know, something happens?
You have to go and believe.
Anything, anything can happen.
Yeah.
I understand. But I also think the benefit of consolidation of learning and giving kids a break is, is nice. I know we all come from a world where Russ has two cell phones and follows both of them while he's on vacation, but I think for kids it'd be good. Elaine?
I was just, because I was board chair when this came in. It was a student led initiative. They did a ton of work over most of, a good part of a year, Joan, if I remember correctly. They went out and surveyed teachers. They changed their policy in order to get the teachers aligned with it. So I'm just saying that perhaps if this board's, would be more comfortable that we may go back, I probably still have it in my files, we could probably unearth some of that work and share it with the board before you decide.
Yeah.
For me, I have two points. I don't think, I think reading is separate from homework. I think reading is what we expect people to do all the time, just as human beings, and we hope that we don't have to assign it. So it shouldn't, you know, like, even be in that same thing. And the literature around homework that you would see today, the research would say homework just isn't what you think it is. I mean, if you think that kids are consolidated learning by doing homework, well, we're all just kind of like whistling in the wind or something because it's not effective. So to just say we're not going to assign it for these little things is really just...
Well, that brought up, my question is, I, I, and I under, I'm, I'm new to this and I don't know what your plan and schedule is for the board, but, so this is just a very narrow homework discussion. I mean, should we not be looking at the bigger picture? If, if Williston doesn't have homework and some teachers in Shelburne don't have homework and all the teachers in Charlotte do, and we have this kind of, is that something that we...
And then what is the research?
Right. So is that, I, I understand we need to do something with this policy, but is this a bigger discussion?
Yeah, it is. Good retreat topic.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I was going to say it could be a retreat topic or, but it's, it's well noted and I think it's, it's definitely a current topic of great discussion, so, but separate from that.
That doesn't mean you can't extend this policy to K to eight. It's already in, it's already in effect in, in the high school. It doesn't mean we have to do this whole research on homework in general.
But you could, you could keep this policy just at CVU right now and then when you get to the bigger discussion, then make it K-12. Instead of making it K-12 now for just this narrow timeframe and change everything for K-8 and then have it change again potentially. It's just a thought.
Eric, go right down. I'm going to go Eric.
For whatever it's worth, I think it's a prudent policy. I don't think it really limits, and I, I can't imagine it would limit anyone's ability to complete the coursework over, you know, a semester. Works in the high school. It's like, I think it is in practical terms sort of in place in K-8. I don't think it's a big stretch to make this policy.
One idea behind the no homework over break policy is that for students who go on family trips or international trips with the school, they wouldn't have ti, a lot of time to do homework over break. So for classes that get behind, usually what a teacher will do is say, like, the, at least a week before breaks, I'm going to assign this and it's going to be due sometime the week after break. If you're going somewhere over break, you could start it now and you have at least a week to do it. Or you can take break to use it. And generally, that's worked out pretty well. And I think that there's no point in getting rid of the policy just to get rid of loopholes and make them not really loopholes that are kind of the same thing, just to allow other teachers to then assign like big projects over break. So I think in the most, like, I mean, there are a few flaws with the policy, but for the most part, it's generally pretty effective.
Yeah, and in spirit, it's working.
Yeah.
Okay. Erin?
I think it's possible that this might shift for the high school in the coming years with flexible pathways and personalized learning now because schedules might be different for different kid, you know, as Adam's really pushing so much on this as we kind of break down the school wall, the hours, the days, you know. It's not as directed and I think that will shift. So, you know, that won't necessarily be homework perhaps teachers are assigning, but work students are doing that may not fit within the normal day calendar. I think that stuff's going to start to happen more, so, you know, we can see, but...
There's kind of some nuance to that in there in the third phrase that they bring up. So, I mean, I mean, I mean, we're not going to make an action on this now, but I'm, I'm inclined to do this to be CVSD wide. And I would recommend we bring that forth the next time we have it. There are some negatives. It's, nothing's perfect, but I don't see it being the worst idea. And I especially like Thomas's insights, like, the only thing we have great student led insight on. It's amazing. Love it.
Well, and the good news is there aren't any vacations coming up until Thanksgiving, really, long vacations. So we have time to correct it.
Yeah.
If we have unintended consequences.
Right.
I think it would be helpful to hear from the K principals to make sure they're comfortable with it and can sell it to their teachers, especially if there are pockets where it's less the practice or where this might feel like a bigger shift.
Can Jeff follow up on that, I think?
I will.
You will? Okay.
You will collectively follow up on it.
All right. And then CV, the third policy, which is graduation requirements, CVU is still working on those, so they're going to follow up at a later date.
I, I had a quick question. The, the copyright one was in there as well. And just my question on that was with the Nexus and the PLTs and all, a lot of the student work is now being done with professionals out in the community. I just wasn't sure that, right now it basically said student work is student work. But if students are working with outsiders and creating new things through Nexus, is that covered in that policy?
It's a good question. And I don't know the answer to that up top. I need to, so it's work, it can be covered under exceptions to the copyright law, but I would need to do some research to really look at that.
That was one of the questions.
I'm sorry, the graduation requirements, when, what's the timeline on when the new ones are going to be prepared?
City board member here?
I, I thought we adopted a temporary one and then it was, it was, it was, I thought we were talking about it in May, at the, the May meeting, but...
Work in progress.
Is that something that might be on the agenda at the retreat or is it already, it sounds like we keep adding stuff to that agenda, but...
Yeah, I think that we'll need to, we're, we have later in this agenda, retreat planning. We're going to collect your brainstorm, like, what are the things you want to put on? And then we're going to have a meeting Thursday, I think, it's Thursday, to just look at that and just start sorting it out and saying, okay, well, we have one day. What can be done during the retreat? What might we suggest to you is done during your work plan during the year? We'll figure that out. But lots of things have been put on the retreat. I mean, we could go away for a couple of days at this point probably, but...
Okay.
Makes sense?
All right. Any other comments on any of the other policies? No? Okay. So excellent segue. 7.2, retreat planning. So we'll just take notes on potential topics to discuss. So you already, I saw you already had homework. I know previously we talked about communications and looking at how the communications committee can work more effectively and what sorts of things people want to do. Open up the floor, any other, there's many things, yeah?
I don't know if it would be useful to have each of the current separate boards report and anything that they might think is a nuance about them. I can think of at least a couple things that I think we do on the Williston board that we don't do here. I think I emailed you guys about them, but making sure that we don't drop things as we move forward. It could only be half an hour, it could be an hour, I don't know what it would be. And maybe we invite the existing board chairs to come if they aren't already there.
So you're saying like maybe, you know, for example, like a facilities project that's going on in one particular school or ongoing things that require board attention, that type of thing or?
More just differences in terms of, so like, for Williston, for instance, we have a representative from the Williston school board at the local PTO meetings every month. And that's somebody that we've voted on to go and do that. So I don't know if there are other things like that. It's, so it's not specifically just a project like the facilities project because obviously that is going to become a focal point later, but it's more other routine things.
Yeah, Elaine?
And I suggest that at the May meeting, which will be an abbreviated meeting anyway, but at the May meeting, we have that as an agenda item. And that each of the boards has their conversation about, we've already done it with CVU twice. They had it at their board meeting and then they came to this board in November.
Right.
But we would have each of the boards do exactly that because I think inviting even just the chairs, if they're not part of this board, already I just joked about two days, we could take a week. You know, the more we complicate this day with other people and other things, then you can't invite somebody to come to your meeting and ask them to stay 15 minutes. That just doesn't work. Like, that's really, there's a law about meetings. If you schedule a meeting, you're going to be there 45 minutes, even if you've got two minutes of work. So if we could, if you, if you, if you guys are all okay with it, we'd do it at the local meeting in May, in two weeks.
Do we have, do we have a CVSD rep on every local board currently? I know, okay.
Yes, yes.
Okay, then that person needs to be there in two weeks.
And one of us will be there, right? And we'll make sure that we're prepped to do that.
And I think you're just trying to develop a list of nuances, as you call them, and then strategically talk about how you then handle those interesting differences going forward.
Right. And maybe it's just that we pick them all up and keep moving them forward. It's, I just don't want to accidentally drop anything.
I think that's a great idea.
Erin?
I think that some kind of presentation from the high school or from Adam about the dramatic shift to proficiency based learning and grading, especially because the high school has been kind of a leader in the state and regionally and also we seem to be kind of working backwards, like the high school leading now moving to the middle school with a lot of the instructional methods, the reporting. We are going to be dealing with policies around graduation requirements and credits and things that are going to start to look very different from what most of us are used to or how we went to school and took classes and earned credits. The CVU board's gotten more of that over the years, but it's, you know, it's a pretty huge shift that's happening and it might be helpful to get that high school perspective on it.
I agree with that and I'd go maybe beyond a presentation to some kind of real discussion about what the board would like to see.
Okay. Yeah. How many of you guys have middle schoolers in, in this district? You do, yeah. You do. It's like, I feel like as a middle school parent for the first time, it's starting to roll down to us and it's, it's interesting.
It would be interesting to start it right at the exit point, you know, give us a marker. What are the graduation requirements? What is it, something that, you know, what is a degree, whatever it's called, that comes out of CVU? What's that marker? And then go backwards from there. Do we have a, a list of retreat items already?
No. I mean, we've, I have some in every notebook that I own.
So right now we're, we're...
Because as the years have gone on, we've been talking about things and I'll collect that and even today we were doing that again, but...
And say that would be a great retreat item.
Exactly. And I've got a stack about this big, but...
Are you coming to the retreat, Jean?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we talk usually about common topics at retreat too, right?
So that's kind of a brainstorm at the end, what might you want?
Yeah.
But that, that's a bigger conversation about what will our meetings look like? What's the structure of the meetings next year? And then do we have a common topic or is that now a presentation? Or, you know what I mean? That's for discussion.
Okay.
It's one of the opportunities you have is to reinvent the whole thing.
So the, the structure of our meetings and our organizational issues, to me, is a really important topic. That's going to guide us for the next few years until, until we decide to change things again. So I hope we give it... So I hope we give it the time that it deserves, but not too much time so we bore ourselves.
Yeah.
Specifically, I think we need to make sure we look at the things that might require a quorum, because, do disciplinary hearings require a quorum?
Yes.
Disciplinary hearings, facility bid openings and bid awards, I don't know what other things might require a quorum, but I think we might need to have a list of that, just so people have an idea of what meetings might pop up and come up on the horizon, and...
Are you at our meeting this afternoon?
I was there yesterday, a meeting, and I'm always in the row, and...
And can we have, or designate for the disciplinary hearings?
Disciplinary hearings require a quorum of the board.
Yeah.
Period.
But we might need to talk about staggering, so we don't...
The good news is, this year, how many disciplinary hearings have you had? One?
Three.
I'm sorry, it's a longer time to actually happen.
Right. So, so it's not that there are that many, but we did honestly have this conversation today, and it's a serious conversation.
The system now is kind of who's available, or...
Right. Because you're working with...
But it's a smaller quorum.
Times, you kinda have to go with...
No, CVU, well, not CVU, CVU's quorum was six, and it'll be six.
Oh, I hear that, okay. It'll be a larger quorum for facilities.
And that's like another piece that we need to decide, because it's a twelve-member board.
It's six.
Is our quorum six?
Yes, I did.
Or do we wanna make it seven?
Nope, it is six.
Yeah.
By Robert's rules. I looked that up the last time we had this conversation. It is six.
You can also choose to change it, I think. I don't see a reason for it, but...
Yeah, I was gonna say, I wouldn't do that, at least af, until after we've had at least one year of experience with begging, pleading, paying people to show up.
Okay.
Because there will be, there will be times, in particular this summer, and it will be around facilities likely, where we're going to be begging people to show up for a meeting or call in for a meeting, so to add another layer of challenge.
It's a great lead-in.
And also in that name, if we can have something around the subcommittees that we're gonna have set up, because I know certain subcommittees also have a lot of meetings.
That could have, that could have something to do with the structure of our meetings, as we were saying before. It's possible that, as an example, that once a month you'd get together, and it would be design teams or subcommittee meetings, or whatever you wanted to call yourself, really focused on work, and then share out at the end. So everybody, there's a team, there's a group that's doing the, the big work, but everybody knows what's going on, because at the end, everybody's sharing out, here's what we did in our committee, our design team this week.
The first carousel.
Yeah, exactly.
I think another retreat topic can be equity, and that may be sort of different directions that could go, but I remember in the budget presentations this year, and looking at how many things are changing now that we're merged, and figuring out, what does it mean to have equity still autonomy and let schools be themselves? But what is it, what are, how are we gonna go about that process, and to sort of divide resources equitably? That equity piece, and then I know at least of the CVU board, a big, big question about equity and our kids who are, you know, the most vulnerable, and how we're serving them their outcomes, that was really the, that was the core of the, the CVU retreat time last year, and wanting to continue to focus on that, so that's kind of two different equity topics, but...
And I think you're typing these, and I, I know you're like, oh my gosh, we could spend two days, but I would remind everyone that our, if we take our CVSD retreat and say it's gonna be like our CSSU retreat, that's not right. We're gonna have the whole day for all of us. We're not gonna split in half.
Right.
Russ isn't gonna go play golf in the afternoon.
Play golf.
Yeah, so we'll have the whole day, and we'll, we're gonna be in a beautiful setting. We're gonna be at All Souls in Charlotte, Shelburne. Is that Shelburne?
Shelburne.
It is Shelburne.
Shelburne.
I'm not a member of the tourist board, so that's okay. So, yeah, so we do have an opportunity to dig deep on, dig deeper on things, I think. So, any...
And I know, I mean, well, maybe we can drill down to this, but I think at the end of our time there, it, it would be really nice to have maybe our top three or five things, like, what is, what does our board do? Like, what are, what are gonna be our, our focus?
Goals, priorities?
Yeah, in the senses, you know, are we the budget people? You know, should we be more effectively communicating across principals, or, I don't know.
Shoot me.
I think we should just really have, that was a lot we talked about in the transition committee, about with this new board, really what is our, what is our role, where does our responsibility lie?
Yeah. Budget and policy. Budget and policy, that's right. We have, definitely have to drive that home, and I agree, it's like...
But you have to spell it out, right?
Yeah.
I mean, you really do, like, just, what does that mean?
Yeah.
Budget and policy.
I agree, and how do you know you're being effective at policy?
Exactly, or budget for that matter.
What does that matter?
Yeah, so that would, because we've talked about, I'm sorry.
No, 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 go ahead.
We've talked about communications being sort of part of the agenda, and talk about how we measure ourselves being effective. I feel like communication sometimes is an afterthought of, of like, how do we try to make people think that we were effective, as opposed to working backwards from, how do we, part of our goal is not just policy and budget for the sake of policy and budget, but it's for serving our clients, right? So whether it's students, families, taxpayers, you know, how do we measure how well we're serving them? So with students, that can be outcomes, you know, with taxpayers, it's budget, but sort of, I don't know, I'd like to find a way for us to think about maybe putting some thought into that customer service side of things, or that consumer service kind of thing.
I totally agree with you. I totally get what you're saying, and I think it's like, being proactive on the front end of that, and not, like you said, oh, how do we describe what we just did? You know, I agree. And I think that's what the conversation on communications is, would be, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and, and more than communications, it's the evaluation piece. How would we know that we're an effective board?
Yeah. Yep. All right.
Entirely self-serving to make sure that we have some discussion about how we're gonna do the budget next year?
I already wrote it.
I'd be happy to tell you, but you probably won't.
Just so you know that, this Thursday, Jean, she'll join us at our retreat planning session, but following dates you'll be able to write that, so she'll be joining us on the planning retreat.
Awesome. Anything else? I think we missed discussing concussions in professional sports, but we covered every other topic. Anyway, all right. And so we move on to facilities, and the Williston Project, and Bob, you're gonna fill us in.
This is a relatively narrow-focused item from my view and Sandy's view. It could be a broader-focused item if you all take the conversation in directions we weren't anticipating. But the primary need here is, in support of the Williston Project and the Shelburne Project, the board will have to go into session numerous times through July and August to keep things moving forward, because by law, that board, the new board is required to both open bids and award contracts. Williston has the bulk of twenty million dollars going to contract sometime in that timeframe. Shelburne has possibly a million or a half a million going to contract. So before Sandy sends you an email that says, what dates do you have available in July and August, and you go, for what? It is because on July first, you are all responsible. No longer do we cajole at least three members of the Williston Board to join us for a half an hour, two nights a week, or the Shelburne Board. We have to cajole six of you to join us to keep things moving forward. So we'll start the process, it's either gonna be with a survey of what weeks you're somewhere within the vicinity of your hometown, so we have an idea of where we might land to make it happen, and if, and in some order, or some process step down further, it may be us calling and begging you to figure out a way to call in, show up, attend, but we'll need six of you for contract awards, and probably four of you, we don't necessarily need a quorum to open bids, but we do need a warned board meeting at which those bids are open. So we're, we're able to accommodate smaller numbers for the bid opening, but we actually need at least six of you there for a contract award.
If I could ask Jean, as your successor, to put the Shelburne and Williston meetings together as much as possible, understanding that maybe they're not always gonna happen at the same time, but if you can have them happen at the same time, that would be...
That will happen by process, because the Williston team is relatively disciplined and gets out in front of themselves and has meetings set up, and once the Shelburne team finds out there's already a meeting set up, they'll take advantage of it. So, so that's what we'll do. But I wanted to do a little orientation on what's about to unfold, so you don't shoot Sandy awry when we send you the notes, that we'd like to see you during the summer.
So, for me, I could attend pretty much everything in July, but the problem is, is all those types of meetings tend to happen at five-ten.
Only because the current sitting principal wanted them to be at five-ten, so...
So if we could push him back, I think he would have them.
You give us additional input on when, when that forty-five minute need or half an hour need might be best, then, then get that Sandy's in my way. But we'll give you some vehicle to respond back, before you have to anguish. Yes?
And it might be better for some people to have an early morning meeting, if it's just a half-hour meeting, and people can be there at seven-thirty, for some, that might work better. So if we could have options on times?
We'll, we'll develop a really good survey to start the process.
The toodle-puff's gonna be long.
Toodle-puff. Just got that. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sure.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Aye. Pardon? Oh, before, did we get a second there? You said you seconded that really quietly, I thought. Okay. Confirm our next meeting dates. CSSU Board in two weeks from tonight, negotiations meeting a week from tonight, executive committee meeting on May eleventh. That's something you'll be asked to attend, Colleen, on the eleventh. Twenty-fourth is our retreat, and again, it's at All Souls, if anybody doesn't know where that is. Just let us know. Kind of buried in the hills of Shelburne Farms. And June twentieth will be, is that CVSD, is there no, there's no CSSU business meeting, is there, in June?
No.
It's just gonna be this one? Okay. All right, we have no executive session, so can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'd make a little bit of an announcement, Joan just reminded me about.
Okay.
So on the sixteenth, and I mentioned this at the CSSU meeting two weeks ago, we will have an abbreviated CSSU meeting, and abbreviated local meetings. We will be all adjourned by six-fifteen, and we will all convene in the cafeteria and have a kind of transition dinner with CVSD Board, CSSU Board, past board chairs, past people who served on any one of the three red committees, the red committee, the initial committee, the, so we've had three of those, and some past administrators who were around. So we're hoping to gather everybody and kind of do a passing of the baton from CSSU